Getting back from break, but we will, we will get started again. Mr. Gerber, did you want to make a comment that can help us wrap up this section?
Deputy Mayor, thank you, governing buddy. Great discussion, obviously, getting into a lot of good information there. If I might suggest that we defer part of this discussion until after we hear the full details of the proposal on next Tuesday night. That may help answer a lot of the questions that, that we're having and certainly this is giving Ms. Stiles an opportunity to tailor her presentation to some of the questions she's hearing, but I suspect if we, if we give it till after Tuesday night, we'll have a better idea of, of what we're really talking about.
Thank you so much, and we were sort of tag teaming this. We knew we were going to get into this, once we discovered that the presentation had been planned for Tuesday night, that we'd be a little ahead of it. Just to wrap up this, this line item discussion though, if there are any other concerns or overall thoughts that council members have that we can share with one another and that also then Ms. Stiles would have in mind before Tuesday night, any, any other input on this subject? The line we're on in particular is adding staff to specifically work on, to staff to work on demolitions. Yes? Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to see us look at whether or not we go after the fines, after we demolish a property. Does the city go after any kind of retribution that was out there that we should go after?
Okay, so that would be part of a specific question and a master plan for managing this. Ms. Shaw?
Along the lines of what the mayor was asking earlier, I would hope that perhaps by Tuesday, we might know how many additional property maintenance cases the current inspectors could handle, being freed up from their current job, which includes looking at vacant buildings.
Thank you. Any others? Jensen?
Just real quick, the biggest thing to help with this entire process is reporting the problems. I can't tell you the number of calls I get where people have said, "There's a problem. It's been a problem for years," and when we go to look, it's never been reported. So, the, the biggest thing to get some of this stuff moving through the system in the city is to have constituents, people out there, just please use your smartphone, get on the website, or call 311 and report the issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was reminded during the break that the issue of just consistency amongst the inspections and standards is, is one that has come up as well, that council is eager to hear, hear back on.
Deputy Mayor, I think this is a proverbial, "How do you eat the elephant? One bite at a time." This is a great first bite, I think.
Exactly.
And, and with that, I'll turn it over to Nikki Lee.
So, we're drawing the elephant, and then we'll move on. Next item is Lee.
Thanks for that visual. Where are we on the list? Here at page nine is discussing one new trade inspector. So, this is in the same department, but a different functional area of neighborhood relations is in development services. That is where they handle all of the trades and permits and inspections in the city. So, we have by code, when a new building comes on, whether it be residential or commercial, they have to meet certain plumbing, electrical, and mechanical requirements. And before they can take that next step, they have to get an inspection done by the different specialized trade inspectors. This is an area that during the recession, when construction was down, got cut a lot because it was able to get cut. Now that everything's turning back around, we're realizing that we really are short a mechanical trade inspector. At this point, we cross train where we can, but bottom line, we have enough inspection and permitting demand in the city that even if our plumbing trade inspector knew enough about mechanical inspections, they actually, they don't have time either to get to those other ones. Additionally, especially commercial mechanical inspections are so technical and so specialized that you really want the same person doing those. Really, it's for the safety of everybody and just because of that level of expertise. So, what this is, is this is an additional trade inspector that would be a mechanical inspector, so that we would have two inspectors that would cover that. That means there'd be coverage every day. There would never be a time where if one person was gone, they just simply couldn't be done. This is really a customer service area that we feel is the right time to introduce this back to the budget. Additionally, this will be offset by, we do get inspections and permits revenue, so this would help to be offset by that.
Questions? Mayor?
Just very briefly, and I think this is very important. In a sense, this is like economic development, because if any of you have been involved in projects in your own home, where you have to wait on a city inspector to come out to approve, it's just so valuable and so important. It's, it's our, again, the service we're providing, it is almost revenue neutral because of the fees that they charge, but it means so much if you talk to developers, the fact that we have appropriate inspectors ready to come out immediately. It is vital, so certainly I think it's an important step that we would be taking.
Councilwoman?
What's the average wait time for an inspector to go out now, and what, how would that change?
Would you mind if we followed up? I want to make sure that-
No, that's fine.
We've got, the person that oversees the development services is out today, and I'm sure there's a different response based on whether it's a mechanical, whether it's a plumbing, whether it's electrical. So, if that's okay, then we'll get back with you with that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Good question. Other questions on this one? Proceed.
Okay, the next item is another additional FTE. This is an internal auditor. Not sure how many of you are familiar with what we had in the 2015 budget for the past couple of years, is that it's pretty standard for cities of our sides to have somebody on staff that does internal auditor functions. So, this is a person that's really meant to be an independent body from any of the departments that studies and gets into any kind of audit that Sydney needs to be done on a process or on really anything that people see fit. This is somebody that does that kind of a study and then produces kind of the results and the recommended actions to remedy whatever item was being studied. In our case, we have been contracting out for a part-time person and paying $45,000 for that contract, and we've really gotten to the point where we don't believe that a part-time internal auditor is adequate. Additionally, this person wasn't a member of the city staff, so they really weren't integrated into city functions. While they need to act independently, they also need to be familiar with how the city operates on a day-to-day basis. And if you're not here full-time and you're not really in City Hall, you're really not going to understand that and provide the best results. So, what this is, this is introducing the internal auditor FTE, which is very common in other cities and other cities of similar sizes. It varies where the position is housed. In our case, this position is housed in the admin and finance department. We really could have put it anywhere. We could have put it in legal, we could have put it in executive, we could have put it in its own department. Bottom line though, this person will report directly to the city manager, so really where their department is, is a technicality. It's somebody that will act completely independently of any department.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Are we going to hire the consultant, or are we going out to, is this a whole new person we would bring in?
It would be our FTE, so it would be our own position.
Well, right, but we've been contracting with someone to do this work now.
Uh-huh.
So, are we just going to hire the person that's been doing it part-time?
We would go through the normal recruitment process. They could certainly apply like anybody could, but that would not be the necessary intention.
Councilwoman?
Okay, let me make sure I understand. You had an outside auditor, but now we're saying that to do a better job, or I don't know why do they need to know the ins and outs of the city if we've always had an outside auditor doing? Did they not do well?
I would answer that question, Councilwoman McClear, similar to what Ms. Lee did. It, it's important, if you're going to do a thorough analysis, that you be part of the organization. Having someone come over two weeks out of every month, alternating, alternating those weeks doesn't get them into our operations and procedures like we need them to. They really need to sit in staff meetings, they need to visit with the city manager, they need to visit with other staff so that they can understand some of the, some of the issues that they might be facing.
And they, and they would be, after that, do you think they're going to be as objective? After being immersed?
Yes, I mean, it will be critical for this position. That's a, that's a fair question and a valid point, but it'll be critical for this position to report directly to the city manager, so that it's understood by the organization that they're receiving their marching orders from the highest level and that whatever they do carries that weight associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, just because the term is auditor, it does not mean that it specifically pertains to finance development. I think that if my understanding is correctly, it's like a Kaizen position, which what it does is continual development in the organization, so that you can ensure that you have best practices operating in every single department, so that you have an individual that is, you know, there's a lot of new trends. I mean, Six Sigma is not new, but things like Six Sigma, things like, you know, Lean, that are processes, that you're verifying every single process that is happening in the organization, so that you can constantly improve. In many organizations, as they're moving into the future, one of the big things that they're doing is ensuring that they have those positions, so that they can keep on analyzing the departments and optimizing them, shrinking them, and making sure that they run more efficiently.
Councilwoman Daly, you slathered that fair point. I, I say a lot that words mean things. We're using the word auditor in a more generic sense, not as someone who will come in and audit our books. That will continue to happen on a yearly basis, and in fact, you'll hear about that at the next city council meeting on Tuesday. You'll hear about our 2014 audit, and we've got great news that we're excited to share with you, but I digress a little bit. This is a person who will come in and help us with best practices and help make sure we're modeling efficient and effectiveness throughout the organization.
So, this, does this do away with some of the studies that we hired to get done?
I think with an organization, our sides and scope, there's always going to be need for outside help in very specific and very detailed areas, so I wouldn't want to say, yes, it does away with the need for that, but there's that potential.
If I may, the council about five years ago created that first position that we have now, and the idea when it was created was that there would be some council direction and that that individual might, at least on some cases, report directly to the council. Is there any consideration of that involvement with the council for this position?
I, I would answer that by saying, I, I think the council's involvement would be similar to what it is for any executive level position, and that is you, you give your concerns and priorities to the city manager, and then he, he passes those on as appropriate to the staff member.
Just wanted to clarify that. So, your view is that still this position would be an internal one that reports internally?
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions on this one? Proceed.
Okay, we're moving on to the next category under contractual. First is demolition funding. I believe we've talked quite about, a bit about this, so I'll just be quick, that in the current budget, really for the past few years, this has been set at $100,000, and that's really not adequate to focus on everything that we've been needing to focus on. In addition, when we have those two new people specifically focused on this item, we will be able to get to those dollars more effectively. So, this would create a total of a $400,000 pot of money that could be used for this.
We'll talk about this for over Tuesday night. Any, any other comments today? All right, move on. Thank you.
Okay, the next item here, anticipated electric rate increase. West Star has submitted a proposal, and they're currently in conversations with the Kansas Corporation Commission about a potential rate increase. At this point, it's unknown, and we're not sure exactly how much that, you know, where they're going to land on that. As you know, it goes through the whole process, but we have gotten some guidance from them and talking with them, that it would be safe and most conservative to build in an increase. So, we believe that to be very safe, we actually recommend that departments add 8% to their electric costs, so look at how much they spent in '14, and then add 8% to that. We're hopeful it may come in under, it may come in under that amount, but we're not really sure, so just to prepare for the worst, we went ahead and built that in. Our biggest electric bills come related to our streetlights. That's paid out of our public works department, so that's really where the bulk of this electric, potential electric rate increase hit, hit was in the public works department.
Questions? Yes?
Is this current streetlights or any proposed new streetlights?
Good question. At this point, this assumes that just with our current load, this is how much it would cost us.
I think we're going to hear from the sustainability board on Tuesday evening as well. There have been some discussions of the cost-effectiveness of changing out some lights, both the contracted ones and the ones we have. Does this include any changes for energy conservation?
No. If we did do that and it saved us, then of course, this is setting it at high ends. Hopefully, we can always spend less than this, but this assumes that we'll be ongoing with current operations.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you. I'm going to back up for just a second. I apologize. On the demolition funding, can I get a breakdown of that proposed $300, and why we feel we need additional $300?
Yeah, would you mind if we follow that up?
Yep.
So, basically, how do we back into that amount?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, $300,000.
Yeah, whatever. I got you.
Richard wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Right. Any, anything else on the electricity? Move on to downtown?
Additional downtown funding. The 2015 budget reinstated funding to be administered by Downtown Topeka Inc. It is called the Downtown Redevelopment Incentive Grant Program, and it's something that in past years, we funded off and on. Back in the early 2000s, it was funded at about a $300,000 level, so in prior years, it was funded at a greater amount. You know, between 2010 and 2014, this was an item that's been cut because simply the city couldn't afford it. But starting with the 2015 budget, council really believed that with all of the infrastructure and the investment that was going in on the city's part to improve Kansas Ave, that we wanted to reinstate this funding. The point of the funding is to incentivize businesses, residential developments downtown within the specific, it's within the business improvement district that's designated currently by DTI. So, this would incentivize them to make improvements, infrastructure improvements on properties. The reimburse, it's a reimbursement amount, and it's capped at a certain level, and it's not near enough to cover the whole project cost, so individual grantees cannot take this money and cover everything. They have to have a lot of skin in the game, but this is really an incentive to hopefully get those different people who are considering putting in a house. Maybe they'll do a loft downtown, maybe they'll build their business downtown instead of somewhere else. There is some feeling that once we're coming out of the construction project, that really to keep that positive momentum going and really ensure that our investment of the infrastructure is going to keep businesses and residencies down there, that it would be important to increase this funding by 150,000 and bring it up to 300. And really, as I said, that's to help ensure that our investment is really going to be followed through and that it's going to be successful.
Are you aware of the return that is received? I, I know it's very, I think for our 150,000 we put in in the past, there's been millions that, it's just that incentive to get them started, and I think it's been a fantastic return. So, although in a sense, it's, it's large, but yet it's a small investment, in a sense, that we make, that there's just tremendous building upgrading that's done because this little grant that they, they get started, they, they continue to do work with, so.
If you don't mind, I can follow up with, I have information from Downtown Topeka Inc. that showed of the 2015 grants, who it went to, but also what the grant cost was, but also what their full project cost was. So, that kind of gets to, you know, maybe this grant program covered 110,000, how much has gone out year-to-date, but the total project investment was X amount, so I can follow up on a Q and A with that.
Thank you.
So, you'll, you'll send that sheet to all of us?
Uh-huh.
That's great. Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Very quickly, for those of you that are not familiar with this program, the program does not go to a grantee specifically. Every single dollar that is taken goes directly invested into the infrastructure of the building, so every dollar stays right there in the structures in Topeka. And I think that my estimate is very conservative, but I think that we have a three to one return on our investment for every dollar that we invest. We've been talking a lot about economic development and how we're going to support small businesses and, and just trying to be supportive of what's happening right now, and this is a great fund for us to just ensure that all the work that's being done right now in our downtown continues working. So, very excited about this.
Proceed.
Thank you. Next on the item is IT fees. That's our intern, our information technology fees. We'll be speaking more about how we budget for our internal service funds on the 23rd, but IT, fleet, and facilities are our main internal service funds. What that means is that they're actually in their own designated funds, and we charge out to departments based on their usage of those certain items. In information technology, this is one place where these past few years, we have shifted some of the costs more off of the general fund and on to other funds, simply because the general fund couldn't afford the costs. The IT fund has a certain bottom line that they need to operate and provide all the services in a given year, so we need to get to that total amount by charging out to departments. With 2016, we shifted some of those costs back to the general fund based on actual usage of IT services, so it's a good thing and it's a theme I'll hit up in a couple of points here, is that we're getting back to charging more accurately to our own departments and our own funds based on usage, rather than, well, this fund can't afford it, so we're going to move those costs over there. What that meant for the general fund, and you'll see it in a few departments, if you look at their particular IT fee line, is that that added $100,000, a little over $100,000 more to the general fund, but it shifted off of some of the other funds. So, the overall IT fee bottom line is actually the same as what it was in the prior year, but we're more accurately assessing that to the departments.
Council?
Quick question on that. A little bit further up, I see we have a court technology fund for $45,000. Does that included in this IT fees thing, or why does the court have a special line item for technology as opposed to just being lumped in with all of IT?
Sure. That's actually separate, actually, the state has a, the state has a, I was right. He's here in case I get it wrong. The state allows every municipal court in Kansas to charge a certain amount on top of the fee and fine that everybody pays to cover that court's technology.
Ah, okay.
Actually, you can charge up to like $9.50. We're not at that level here in Topeka, but that money that you charge has to actually go into a court technology fund to be used for court technology.
Okay.
What most court systems have done in, throughout Kansas, is they've used that to go electronic, basically, so that's what helps support when you convert to e-ticketing, so that your tickets from police come directly into the same technology that you're using on the court side.
Okay.
It helps support that kind of information.
Great.
So, that's actually its own fund paid by the users.
That makes sense, yes. Okay. Good deal. Thank you so much.
Did I get it right, Judge?
Okay. Proceed.
Contributions for inmate crew program. Sasha got into this a little bit when she referred to the inmate crews. I'm not sure how many of you are aware that we actually have a program where we use, it is state prisoners, that they have to meet certain requirements. Only certain ones are allowed to be on this crew, but basically, they can go out into the city of Topeka and provide services for us. It's things like mowing, they can provide cleanup, they can help at some of the demolition sites to clear things out. What we do is we have departments that use their services pay into the support of this program. What we have to pay for to support this program is that we pay for the supervisors of these crews, so we have two supervisors that are actually county employees that oversee the inmates. And we also have one internal city program coordinator that oversees the day-to-day and figures out what they can work on, what they've got time to do. She oversees kind of their caseload. So, the way that we assess these fees is we base it on which, again, which departments are using most of their fees or most of their services. And what we found is that in 2014, really building codes is the ones that uses them the most. So, what we've done is kind of retool the fees to better reflect who's actually using the services. There were a few funds that we were charging that actually haven't been using them, so we're no longer charging them, or we're charging them to a less amount. What this means to the general fund, and this actually hits mostly the neighborhood relations and public works departments, is that that cost is actually going up a little bit more to them, but the services that they provide are far, far cheaper than if those departments were to go out and pay a contractor to do that mowing or do that cleaning up. It saves the department a lot of money, and it's really a win-win. The inmates that are doing these kinds of services really love being able to get out and about, and it really, in some ways, is kind of a training program that gets some of them into these certain trades and shows them how to do these kinds of things. So, this is a program that's unique in Topeka, but I think has a lot of positives and is something that we want to keep investing in.
Councilwoman?
So, it's, it's the state prisoners that are doing this?
I think they're all state, right?
Yeah.
County.
Okay.
And state or just county? Both, okay.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
The women are from the state, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the men are from the county?
Okay. Thanks.
Councilwoman?
I'd like to say that Mayor Button put this in effect, and it is a very, it's very crucial. It's, it's, it's a very, it's a good program. It's a good program. How did we get it, and I'm not disputing, how did we get it 79, the increase of 79,000?
What we did is we, we have a list of all the services that the inmate crew provided to every single city department in 2014, and then we also knew what the inmate crew's bottom line cost was to operate, so we simply figured out a percentage based on prior year usage. In the general fund, they spent X percentage, and the total budget needs to be this number, so we kind of backed into what that total needed to be based on 2014.
And does this include their equipment? Because I know that they work on very minimal equipment, and we've helped them out in different areas, and so, again, giving them the tools that they need. I had property cut by the county, they, I'll just use this as an example, and they, they cut the property and they leased it out, or contracted it out, and them contractors came, and they were out of there so quick, but it looks terrible. When the inmates come, they take pride in their work. They weedy, they even came to my corner and weedy, you know, because I've hollered at them. They take pride out there, but it gives them a sense of ownership back to the, the community. But I just want to say, you know, contracting out, those guys are making money, they're trying to hurry and get so much done. The inmates, they kind of take their time, so I just want to make sure if this gives them the tools that they need, I just don't know how we came at that figure.
Yeah, this actually does continue on with the current equipment. Also, our other city departments are really good about sharing different equipment, so if occasionally the inmate crew needs X piece of equipment that forestry has, then we have no, everybody works really well together. We have no problem sharing equipment that's needed, so this, this does continue to fund them at the level they need.
Thank you.
Other questions? Proceed.
Okay, next on the list is establishment of arts funding. I did say new here, but actually in the past, off and on, in any given year, the council has, in different ways, shapes, and form, funded the arts. The last time that we were able to find that the city specifically designated a line item in the budget for the arts was in 2005, so it's been quite a few years. Off and on, it's been floated as an idea, oftentimes it doesn't make the cut in the final budget, but I think, you know, indirectly, the city has found different ways to show supports of the arts. What this is doing is this is actually getting the arts back into the city budget, so it's saying, we're just going to set aside, 60,000 was the amount that was chosen, to somehow, some way, some shape, or some way, shape, or form, invest in the arts on behalf of the city. I would say that it's in development, what exactly this money would be used for. We just want to really research what's the best. Should it be granted out? Should it be used for one thing, for multiple things? So, if approved in this budget, then that would really be the focus of the next few months, is focusing on the best way to spend this money to get bang for our buck, but this is to get that really back established in the city budget.
Councilwoman?
Why 60,000 and why not like 20,000 or 100,000?
That was to you.
60 seem to be an appropriate amount.
There might be others who could shut a little bit.
Councilwoman, there's, I don't want to use the word arbitrary, but it's somewhat of an arbitrary number. It could have been, as you say, 20, it could have been 100, but that, that is consistent with how it was funded previously, and so that seemed like a good place to start.
Do you have examples of like what that could be used for?
Some ideas that we've talked about is that it would actually be going out for, for grants. It could be either for education, for events, or for actual public art. For example, murals are a very popular topic right now, but sometimes as a volunteer, sometimes those cost money for supplies or to cover somebody's time, so really, the main three items that have been talked about are education, events, and pieces of art, but what we're finding is, there's just so many, I mean, there's no run right answer to cover arts and everybody- to cover arts and everybody has a different idea or different thought process. So, the idea is that we'd probably work with people in the community that are closer to it and really get their feel for what would be the best investment. We want to see this as an investment. We've seen dollars before about when the city invests in art. Your return on capital investment or even economic development if you're getting more people engaged or to a certain area of town. And we want to make sure that this is really the best investment in the best way.
Mayor?
Yeah, I, just another on background. At one time, we had a, I think it was called like the Topeka Arts Council that was in the city. Actually, and that's put on some of the things that go on in the summer. And then, I know, I think, then it went to, it was a separately, separate entity outside the city that we funded, sort of doing the same thing, sort of like the overseeing the different programs that go on. I mean, with this sum of money, you know, that's really hardly, it's not enough even to do a staff person. But, it's just a, I think, it shows the city has some skin in the game. And, you know, we've had some studies that say quality of life. Some people are critical of Topeka because of its quality of life. Now, whatever that is, we all can say what define quality of life. But, I, I think it's a, a step to show that, and typically, most cities our size are, have some type of, whether we call it arts, community, quality of life or some program. It shows that we are interested in providing programs. When we had the parks department, actually, the community centers would be an area which would be doing programming in this area. But, again, it's, I think, as Nikki said, it's just a, a step, a, and then we would work at how, the process. And it's hard to define how it would be used, but sixty thousand wouldn't go very far, but it shows something. We have a line item and a sense of support for this area of the community.
Any other questions? Comments?
I did get a question from outside prior to this meeting. Someone commented that in other communities, sometimes a fee for the arts is a part of a development fee when new, new, I don't know if it's just new construction. So, have been any, I mean, we're just anxious to see development happening here, but was there any consideration of something like that when this idea was put together?
We've discussed that, to your point, a lot of communities have, some people call it one percent for the arts and what it is of every capital improvement plan that the city approves, one percent of that budget goes towards art for that building, whether it be a structure or whether it be a mural. We've talked about something like that. I think that'd really be, something like that would be more appropriate coming kind of through a council policy, you know, not something that we would just throw on. Because, of course, then that comes back to you're either increasing your capital improvement plan expenses or you're using that one percent that you were going to use for something else towards this. So, it'd be a, I would say, a policy-driven concept, but that's definitely something that other communities do that we've thought about doing.
You mentioned this was last funded in 2005. Historically, has this been cut out due to other priorities, police, fire, other things that the councils just felt unfortunately was more important?
So, the, the technical response to that is that around that time, there was actually an ordinance that was presented by a council member that required, in the ordinance, it said the city would be required to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to an arts fund. So, it was in ordinance, so every year it had to be built into the base budget, but literally every year it got cut out because, like you said, the general fund had a lot of other needs and I think the council just never felt like that was an appropriate transfer to make. So, actually, in 2012, that ordinance was repealed just because it felt like an exercise that every year was put in, but every year got cut out. So, not only did it look like every year the council was cutting out the arts, but it was also just something that was just kind of a unnecessary step, maybe. So, the thing with this is that this is getting it in without requiring it in our ordinance or something like that. This gives more discretion than putting it in like that. I'd say, yes, the short answer is that it just never raised to the level of importance and especially between 2008 and, you know, 2014, there were several mill levy increases. Sales tax and revenues were down, so in those times, it was a cutting environment, very different environment than now.
Councilman Harmon, was that what you were going to explain?
That's exactly what I was just saying.
Thank you. Did you have anything else? Okay.
Counselman Jensen.
I'll just throw in, I think this is a wonderful idea. Art is a huge part of this community. It's growing all the time. I would really look for us to, to put this in this year and then look at how we can maximize that and possibly increase it in the future. Sixty thousand out of a two-hundred-and-something-odd-million-dollar budget is a tiny, tiny, tiny amount for us to be contributing to something that's making our community a much nicer place.
Counselman?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Keller. I agree that it's, it's time to put this back in the budget, but from an administrative point of view, there's going to be many demands for that sixty thousand dollars because arts has been cut so dramatically by, by federal and state. So, I don't know what the process is in terms of vetting proposals for the use of that money, but I would hope that the council could be involved in that at some level, too. Thank you.
So, if it, if it goes through, we know who can be on the committee. Next item?
Natural gas fee increases. This is very similar to the electric. We touched base with all of our utility providers before setting the budget and just asked, was there any feeling or thought that rate increases may be proposed? At this point, I haven't seen that there's been an official request by Kansas Gas to raise anything, but we felt comfortable that saying a two percent increase to our overall expenses would be a fair amount to choose. Again, this may not happen, but we wanted to prepare for it just in case there was an increase. We wanted to prepare for it in the budget.
Any questions?
Increased funding for Topeka Cemetery. Those of you who are new or even on the council may or may not be aware that there's actually an underlying requirement by the state that if there is a public cemetery in a community that goes bankrupt or can no longer be operated, that the burden goes on the city to inherit the cemetery. Did I summarize that well?
Yes.
So, that is why we're even involved in helping to fund the cemeteries at all. So, we actually give money and we have for a long, long time, given money to the Topeka Cemetery, the Auburn Cemetery, and then Rochester, we do help support. And Topeka Cemetery, of course, is one of the larger ones and one of our oldest, one of our most historic ones. And for the past, since 2010, we have been funding the cemeteries at the same level. And as you know, just like on the city's operations, the cemeteries have been feeling a lot of operational strain. The Topeka Cemetery has come forward and said that they're basically having trouble meeting their daily obligations. So, they have requested that we add fifty thousand dollars to the budget to help support them. Really, this is kind of a, fifty thousand dollars is a lot cheaper than running the whole cemetery. So, this is kind of a way of helping everybody along. And we believe Topeka Cemetery has enough historical significance. That's, it's really an investment. So, this would be to meet their requests and kind of raise that funding level.
I, I think I might also add, one of the things we're trying to do is help them work through some better management practice, practices so that they can establish reserve funds and that they're able to appropriately manage their funds so that we don't have to continue upping our amounts every year. So, it's a two, twofold process.
With, with that, then, is the expectation that this would continue at a hundred and fifty thousand a year or just for this year or?
I think we would just be comfortable speaking on the sixteen budget at this point. So, that would be our expectation that if, if the council chose, that that would be included in the sixteen budget, helping them to work through any issues they might have moving forward.
Okay. So, it might or might not continue at that level?
Might or might not is a great answer. As noted, we could inherit the entire thing. So, it, the smaller piece is better than the, than the larger whole.
Thank you. I, I saw some hands.
Sylvia, yeah, but Sylvia.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is in my district and I know a couple of years, they came to us and said, if you give us an extra ten thousand, you know, we got this big advertising, state of the art. Do we know where that's been? Did they say where, you know, where they went with that? That it was supposed to model that other cemeteries would want it like theirs, where the location of different plots were? And do we know where they've gone, gotten to or if they've done anything? I, I agree, we, we don't want to manage it, but we do want to help them to get to that point. And it just, it's, sometimes it just seems that we're going backwards and backwards instead of forwards and they ask for more money.
That's, that sounds like a great follow-up.
Counselwoman, it sounds like you're, you're asking about a cemetery kiosk, perhaps, an electronic kiosk? So, we can follow up on what?
The mayor's got some background on that?
I have been with the areas. I, I followed, yeah, I followed it. They were developing, actually doing a great deal of research on all of the, the people, mostly. Many significant cans, Topecas were buried there for many years. And find, doing more research on the families and then approaching them, because that's what cemeteries are doing today, to get more information about all the people that are buried there. And out of that, many of those people would also make contributions. And I, I think following up, it's a, if you haven't been there, it's a very large area and their equipment has not been able, they just haven't had the income to, to maintain it. And I, as Mr. Gerber says, they're getting on top of this. They're, they're, they've made some significant improvements lately where it is a better operation. And if you, they have, they've received grants to upgrade many of the mausoleums, the obelisks that are out there. So, it is, it is getting better, but it's still, I don't know that they can meet expenses just because of the largeness of the area to maintain. So, I think, again, this is a, an appropriate step for us, as you say. If it doesn't, it, it's ours. So, we either help a little bit now or we take over the whole area. And we don't have a park department to run it. Typically, this is who runs the cemetery. If it comes back to the city or the county, it's a park department. It's mowing and maintaining. So, I, I think it's an important step that we, we should take and, and maybe we can find out more about their status of these programs, where they are.
I, I do think they can give you an answer. I, I know what Councilwoman Ortiz is talking about because they had been talking year after year about a, a local company that was going to maybe develop some software for them that would allow you to find graves of people and, and might then increase their visitorship, the, the people who buried there as well as some endowments. And I don't think they're pursuing that original plan exactly, but I, I do think there's a report that could be had from them in terms of, they still want to do that general concept and so, we could get that information. Did I see another hand, yours?
That could be a great partnership with Seven Twelve Innovations or one of the, the high schools that does, you know, programming and stuff like that.
What a great idea. Mentioned that to them when you asked for their report.
Maybe they're watching.
Seven Twelve Innovations.
Yes.
Can offend the dots here. Any other things on the cemetery? Proceed.
Next, under commodity. Overall, in the city budget, we have pretty much maintained our spending on motor vehicle and equipments. We're not increasing the overall level nor are we decreasing it. We're keeping it pretty much at the current rate. In neighborhood relations, however, there, there is the need for some equipment related to the special structures unit. So, this includes a brush hog, a low-profile dump trailer, a dump truck, and then one vehicle that the property maintenance inspectors would share. And, believe me, we already are and we always do, where there's possible, we share whatever equipment we possibly can. Throughout the city, there is a lot of, I mean, I can tell you, every manager out there knows exactly the piece of equipment that forestry has or streets has or WPC has and when they use it and when they could use it. So, where possible, we really do double duty on all the equipment that we can. But, there is a need for some investment in some new equipment for this area.
If, if, if you could help me with this, I had thought when, when this was originally proposed, that it had to do with demolitions, but it doesn't then. This is more for the other property maintenance tasks that they do?
It would be demolitions as well, but it would, but it would replace what the whole units are currently using. So, like right now, the, what they're currently using, if they ever needed to do something codes for something that a dump truck would do, they would be able to use that as well. But, it's really because of the new special structures unit that we're doing this now.
If, if we, if we could clarify then, as far as I know, we always contract out our, our demolitions. We don't do that ourselves in-house. So, I would have questions about whether, what, what exactly this is for? Because if we were considering getting into the business of that work, I would want to know why, rather than contract it out to our local small businesses.
We can get, I think that's something we can hit up on Tuesday and get back with you on.
Thank you. Question?
Quick question. When we buy vehicles and things like that, do we look at getting ones that are alternative fuels like compressed natural gas as opposed to just regular diesel or gasoline?
I'll give you a generic answer, Councilman. That is, it's, it's going to depend on the, the needs of the department as well as how the RFP is tailored. As you know, it's, it's still somewhat difficult to be able to fuel some of those alternate source vehicles. And so, that, that's also a consideration for us.
Thanks.
Just to clarify, and I would certainly hope for correction if I'm wrong. And talking with property and maintenance, my understanding is the Bobcat they're using is from the nineteen eighties. And that's one of the pieces of equipment they're looking to try to replace as well as a brush hog. My understanding would be this would be more for our inmate mowing crews and property cleanup than for demolition.
That makes more sense. That's why. Thank you. So, we'll get, we'll get that clarification by probably Tuesday night for our presentation. Other questions on this one? Well, as she's coming back, I know one of the things that we looked at overall over the last five to seven years was making sure that if it wasn't equipment, if it was equipment we needed and that we used all the time, we owned it, we could consider not owning some things that we didn't use all the time, too, so. Okay.
I just clarified that we don't currently have any CNG. We do have a few hybrid vehicles where possible.
Okay.
Also, it was called my attention that I accidentally skipped the water fee increases.
Oh.
It's twenty thousand dollars, so it's a small amount, but it's more of a, more of a reminder that on the water fee side, when we talk more about the water fund, there were rate increases that were approved for fifteen and sixteen and seventeen, and in sixteen it was six percent. Well, that also impacts, we as a city and our departments pay for our own water, so that also translated to our city department budgets to about this amount.
Questions on that one? Okay.
Sorry about that. I guess nobody else noticed either.
Good heads up for the unintended consequences of some of our good ideas, right? All right, next item.
Under capital outlay and other expenditure increases, this first item, this is really something that is a good thing. As I mentioned, part of the reason for approving the capital improvement plan in the spring before you do the operating budget is so that you can reflect in the operating budget what was approved in that CIP. So, in the past, sometimes the budget was approved in the summer. The CIP would be approved in October and it would have cash expenditures for certain items that weren't built into that base budget. So, it just didn't, it didn't lend itself very easily to paying cash for items out of certain departments. So, in the capital improvement plan that was passed, the twenty sixteen through twenty twenty, there were several items identified under cash. Specifically, there was a boiler in the Holiday Building, a few fire station renovations, a zoo, x-ray, law enforcement cameras, and the River Weir project. These are all dollar amounts that can and should be paid for out of cash as long as we can afford it. These are items that are too small to bond or not appropriate to bond. So, this is a good thing. This is, where possible, we're going to pay for cash for items like this. Where we have this is in non-departmental, so once these projects come up, we'll just pay for it directly out of the general fund. And in the future years, whenever there's an item in the CIP to be paid for out of cash, you'll see it in the same place in the budget reflected right back to what you approved in the CIP.
Question?
Are there line item amounts for each of these?
Yeah, and actually, it's in the, if you wanted to look at the capital improvement plan that's online, there's actually a summary page of each of these items as well.
Okay.
Let me bring that. Let me bring that.
So like if I looked under the zoo, I could see the, each, what they had?
Actually, what, in, in this budget, we, we put it all in non-departmental. But if you looked in the capital improvement plan, there is a, you would look under the certain funding source. So in this case, the boiler was estimated at 112, 112,000, stations at 60,000, zoo, x-ray at 91, law enforcement at 117. And then the River Weir, we actually have $300,000 built in, in here to be paid out of the general fund. In the CIP, there were some other cash items, but those are built into the appropriate funds. So for example, there was a park, um, a parking garage system, technology improvement. That, when we talk about other funds, that's actually in the parking fund, um, document. And then water and sewer, those are actually built into those funds. So these are just the items that we're paying for out of general fund cash.
Okay. So where is the non-departmental page?
It is page 168. And you'll see that there's a transfer out, I, there's a transfer outline that just shows that whole, full lump sum, because what we do is we transfer it out into a different project. And then those project expenses are tracked by project.
Okay, so, so the, the financial tracking is there, but the itemization of the projects is not?
Not in this budget. Where you will see the itemization of projects is in the quarterly reports now, at the back of the quarterly report. We have a report by project showing how much we budgeted and how much we've spent. So once this money is transferred into that project, you'll see in our quarterly report, we can get that at any time, we said the budget was going to be X amount, and here's how much we've spent year-to-date.
Does that help everybody find it?
It's good.
Okay, thank you. Questions on any of these? Proceed.
Okay, um, next here is a new item. This is a transfer from the general fund for a sales tax revenue project. This was approved in 2012 by some of you members that are here, some of you who haven't been. So if you wanted to see the actual document and agenda item, we can track that with a follow-up. But essentially, the governing body approved an agreement with Christie Development related to crosswinds. And in the agreement, there was an agreement that there would be a sales tax reimbursement. So once the district hits $14 million in total sales, then the city would reimburse to the development 80% of that sales tax receipt. So of the portion that the city receives, which is 1% of that 14 million, we would transfer out, um, up to 80% of that for that given year. So in 2016, we're estimating that that would be about 90,000. This is offset by sales tax revenue, but we do have to show it as an expenditure, because it's something that we transfer out to the developer.
I think by way of further explanation, this is associated with the Crosswinds Community Improvement District, CID. That's an economic development incentive program that the city took advantage of. But again, this is revenue neutral. The money cannot, we won't reimburse folks if it doesn't come in.
Clear on that? Just a new item. Thank you for including it, so we, we knew. No questions? Proceed.
Okay, now we get to expenditure decreases. The largest one in this budget is the Parks and Rec contractual obligation. From 2010 to 2015, we had an agreement with the county when we first consolidated Parks and Rec, that a certain amount of money every year would be transferred from the city to the county to help fund that program. And the amount went down about a million dollars every year. It was set out in this contract in 2010, and we've been following it every year. That last payment actually dropped off in, um, 2015. 2015 is our last payment. So in 2016, there is no longer a large payment going over to the county for Parks and Recreation. We will still continue to have a relationship with Parks and Recreation. You'll always have a Parks and Rec page in our document, because we continue to forward them. We receive special alcohol funding from the state. That part of it must be used for Parks and Recreation-related funding. And it comes out at about 520,000 per year. So we're going to continue to pass that on from the city to the county, per our original agreement with them. But we no longer have to transfer that large amount of money to the county.
Questions?
I have a question. I believe, is, is it true we still are paying on some bonded indebtedness for projects that we, that were, we encumbered, or in the parks before, I think when, when they were transferred, that we were paying, that we will continue to pay, even though we don't own the parks?
Yes, very good point, that it's not exactly accurate to say all that we're paying still is the special Parks and Rec. We can follow up with you on specifics, but we do have in our debt service fund, we're continuing to pay down whatever debt that we, whatever projects we took on while it was part of the city. We will continue to pay on those until the end of their, um, original issuance. But I'll follow up with you on details about how much and where those are still.
That's not the other million dollars that's here?
No.
The debt service?
No.
There's any other debt service?
Okay. So the 1.5, roughly 0.5 of it is the Park and Rec transfer?
Okay. Good clarification. I should have said, said, started off in the very beginning of this whole summary. So this 2015 budget amount, that is for, of that line item that we paid the Parks and Rec contract out of, that's the whole contractual services line item for the whole city budget, not just in the Parks and Rec budget, but in that line item, it was 2.7 million. It's still 1.1, so that 1.5 in '16 actually includes other things in the general fund, like whatever hit that line item is still in there. But the Parks and Rec is the largest reason for that decrease. Yeah, thank you for that clarity. So, good point, exactly like when you looked up at the motor vehicle and equipment purchase, 933,015, 1.04 million in '16. That's not just the neighborhood relations portion of motor, of the vehicle purchase. The neighborhood relations was simply an explanation of why that line item increased.
Thank you. Any other questions on the contractual obligation line then? And in, in all of these, actually, and the staff can give the line item number, but they're spread amongst perhaps one, but maybe as many as 10 or 12 different departments, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So KP&amp;F is a, a good illustration of that. So for every dollar that every employee makes, we pay towards either capers or KP&amp;F to the state for their retirement. And that rate that we pay that on is established by capers and given to us every year. And usually, we're used to this number going up. And the reason for that is that capers, they have a long forecast showing how much they need from cities to contribute, to support the capers fund. And they have hit their actuarial targets for '16 and for beyond. So actually, from this year and continuing in the out years, we're going to be seeing, um, a decrease in how much the employer, we're having to contribute towards capers and KP&amp;F. So for example, for KP&amp;F, in 2015, the rate was 21.36%. So for every dollar that a police officer or fireman makes, we have to pay 21.36% of that to KP&amp;F to cover retirement. And in 2016, that rate is 20.42%. So for K, for KP&amp;F, since it's such a high rate, it made a big enough impact that it actually decreased our budget by a set amount. Capers is going down as well. Capers is going down from 9.78 to 9.18. But it was a, it's a smaller dollar amount on a smaller group of people, so that difference got absorbed by the other increases in full-time salaries. But KP&amp;F is definitely an obvious savings to our overall budget.
Questions on that? Proceed.
Prisoner care payment to Shawnee County. What this is, is that when we have, um, city prisoners that we take in, and then if they're housed at the county for a night, or a week, or however long, the county actually bills us back for that prisoner stay. We've had a million in the budget for a long, long time, as far back as I could see. Of course, you never know in this line, how many, you know, people you're going to have in that given year. However, we realize for the past five years, we've been trending a lot lower than that 1 million. So we've actually retooled our budget to be about 842,000 versus the 1 million. And that's actually higher than what it's been these past two years. So we still feel like we're being conservative. So this is simply kind of adjusting it to where really we've been for the recent history.
Question?
What's the actual?
Uh, for, 2014? How much did we pay?
Yes.
Um, let me send that to you, because it's, it's not on a specific page in here, so I can send you that. I, I want to say it was about 750,000, but let me send you that.
Councilwoman?
Can the year-to-date please?
Sure. Thank you, Judge. That, 2014, 738. And I, we can get you the year-to-date as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Proceed.
Motor fuel, this is an area where I think as everybody's been experiencing kind of a surprising savings in this area. When we were building the 2015 budget last year, we didn't know that fuel prices were going to be going down where they were, so we increased the budget. Not a lot, but we told every department to increase it by a certain amount. In '16, we're still being conservative here, but even with, um, budgeting at a higher level than we think rates are going to be, we believe that in the overall budget, it'll save us 118,000. This is in all of, our departments and all of our funds. A lot of this is in the police department, fire, you know, where we have a lot of our bigger vehicles are where you see most of this budget. But we are expecting to see a savings. And in '15, in the current year, we're having a, a good savings here.
Much question about that, I guess. Drop off?
Okay, so down to your...
To back up to a previous question, it looks like year-to-date, we're at 232,000 through, year-to-date through April.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, 232,000.
Through April 30.
Through April.
Okay. Mayor, or the judge is like MVP this...
Yeah, yeah.
Denise, his deputy judge.
Deputy there, all right. That's good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so moving on to the revenue, of course, when we're talking about the bottom line of the general fund, you've got expenditure increases, expenditure decreases, but really your revenue increases are as important to talk about as your expenditures. On the revenue side, for franchise fees, the 2015 budget, um, was relatively low at that time. We didn't know what a full year of the Westar franchise fee increase would result in to our funds. And we estimated a pretty low level at 13 million, 13.4. For the '16 budget, we based it on 2014 actuals, so we felt very confident that we could actually increase our franchise fee estimates up to 14.9. And this isn't taking into account a potential Westar, Kansas Gas. So if their rates go up, people's franchise fee rates go up, because it's a percentage of their bill. And then also, so would our revenues. So this is still a conservative number. It's one that is volatile, you know, a little bit of it depends on the economy. If people aren't making as much, maybe they're conserving their utilities where they can. Also, it's a little bit weather-dependent. You never know what the weather's going to be like that coming year, so you want to be conservative here. But this 14.9 million dollar number is still very conservative, but it is a, a jump over the '15 budget. Sales tax, we've been reporting to you every quarter how we're doing on sales tax. And as you know, 2015 over 2014, in the current year, we're trending, um, a, a lot better than where we even originally budgeted. So for sales tax, we've actually adjusted where we think we're going to be on the 2015 budget. We have a 2015 forecast number that's based on where we ended 2014, and is also based on how we're doing so far in 2015. So in the 2016 budget, we increased it based off of what we got in 2014. Over the '15 budget, it's actually 3.81% increase, if you look budget over budget. But what you really want to look at is budget over what our current forecast is, because that, our forecast really reflects our current economic trends, not where we thought we'd be a year ago. Sales tax, even this, we really believe that we're still being conservative here. And you always want to come in better than what you thought. So those are our assumptions here. Also on property tax, we introduced this idea a little bit back in April. For property tax, even though we're not raising the mill levy, we're still expecting to see some growth in property tax. The reason is, is new construction. So we've got, um, some pretty good new construction in the city that will result in increasing our tax base. Also, we have some significant companies coming back on the tax rolls. Every year, we look at that. There's companies that have had abatements, or for any, for economic development incentives, didn't have to pay a certain amount of property taxes. And we have about five companies coming back on, that's giving us a boost in our '16 budget. So even standing still without raising the mill levy, since our base is increasing, then that's going up. It's about 2%, or 492,000 from our '15 budget. And then finally, our administrative fees paid by other funds. We've had the chance to hopefully explain what this is to all of you. But what this is in summary is that all of the other major funds, so that would be our, our water, sewer, storm, our utility funds, our parking fund, our streets fund, any major fund that uses services from the general fund. So the general fund pays for legal, for finance, for executive, for clerk's office, you know, all of the services that really serve the whole city are paid out of the general fund. So we, and really every other city that has utilities, are allowed to assess a fee on those other funds to pay into the general fund to help support it, since they're using those services. For the past several years, this has really been not kind of reassessed and figured out what that right amount should be. In '15, this amount was kept at, um, 3.8 million, which is consistent. That includes a few other administrative fees, but it's consistent with some prior years. And in 2016, we went out and had a consultant do a cost of service study to show what actually these other funds should be paying in. And it resulted in actually a 2.5 million dollar number. So to the general fund, that was a dollar amount that the general fund had to absorb, because it was decreased. But it was the right thing to do. Basically, we were overcharging water and wastewater, uh, $900,000 combined. We saved parking and streets each over 100,000. So this is something that needed to be done, and is helping to provide relief for all of our other funds. And really something that's a best practice. And from here on out, every year, every two years, we'd go back and reassess to figure out what that real number should be, um, and reflect that in the general fund.
Yeah, we kind of borrowed from the utilities there for a while, so this is some, some correcting back, which has been discussed along the way. Thank you so much for that. Um, we need to wrap up. This has been a great introduction to the book, both to the highlights that staff has brought forward, but in the introduction, as well as the question and answer, gives us enough to maybe do a, know what we're looking for as we look through some of the rest of the book. Councilwoman Quinn?
I want to tell you, not being a number person at all, um, I, I was expecting my head to swim. And you have made it so understandable and so easy. And I really, really commend you for that.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Um, I know Nikki said that Vic was the MVP. I would not give him that title. I'd like to know who his new assistant is? If you could introduce her, please.
Certainly. Those of you in administration know that to be a good administrator, you don't have to be good. You just have to have good people who make you look good. I've been fortunate, in all the years I've been here, to have, uh, one of the best people I've ever had to work with, and that was Gail Lewis, who's the longtime court administrator. Gail recently retired. Her replacement that we stole not too long ago from the police department is Denise Vaughn. Denise, stand up. Most of you tomorrow will be celebrating Flag Day. Denise will be celebrating her birthday.
Oh. Happy birthday.
Out on that, too. Happy birthday.
I knew it had to be a woman. I knew.
Oh, man.
I have one more announcement.
Okay.
But anyway, I had to get that in there. Um, Brendan, you want to stand up? I bet there was about 200, 300 people yesterday at the park and at the zoo. And their, um, the Capital City Food Truck Festival is going on, uh, from 11 to 9 o'clock today. And the zoo is off, actually open until 9:00 today as well?
It was last night. Concerts, uh, so it was closed right before the concerts start.
Okay, do we know what time that is?
Uh, zoo was open by, give people time to move, the first concert, and...
Okay. If you don't have anything to do, it was awesome. It was just awesome. Facebook was just blowing up. You could come. They ran out of food, that there were so many people. It was just so awesome to see dogs and people and families, and it was just really neat. So if you get a chance, go out today, take your dog, take your kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to particularly, since we're giving some kudos, to thank Sasha Stiles for all the work of getting all this ready, uh, the major initiatives being, being announced, and, and, and visiting with us today. And then we'll, we'll look forward to Tuesday night, getting a chance to ask a lot, a lot more questions. a lot, a lot more questions on that. So thank you, Sasha, for all of the initiatives. Before we break, I want to see if there are any particular areas that council members would like to ask the staff to be ready to bring forward for us on Wednesday evening.
I would ask, could you describe again how we went, what you're going to be handling or doing on Wednesday night? Sort of, we went through that at the beginning, but now, now that we've gone through this stage, tell us, describe again, so we can be prepared.
So the actual agenda is actually pretty open-ended. After minutes, opening comments again, what it says is that follow-up from June 13th, 2015. So what we'll do is we'll put together a Q and A, and we'll disperse that to you all as soon as we can before that meeting Wednesday. But we'll take some time in the beginning of the meeting to say, did you get them? Do you want to, do we need more clarity? Do we want to walk through? Also, the intention Wednesday would be if there's any other thoughts or comments about anything related to the general fund, we'd hope that it would get kind of out there and open. So I would say if people were prepared to comment on anything else that we haven't hit on, that you want to have questions or answers about, it's really the hope that when we come back on the 23rd, you all may be ready to actually vote on the recommended budget. So I'd say the 17th, really, at this point, unless we have any other specific items, we'll probably revisit everything that we had the Q and A about, and then just see what else you all had questions about.
And I've got two, based on last Tuesday evening, for instance, we talked about Public Works and streets and kind of along with what Councilwoman Ortiz raised earlier, if we could have some time from Public Works to talk about just whether they ask for more money at some point, but, you know, how comprehensively they feel like they're funded and ready to do comprehensive maintenance and the regular things like, oh, even striping and so on that came up, and snow removal, how much, how much we've moved forward with this budget to be able to take care of that. We've also had some questions about City 4, and whether, particularly with Cox going out, I think, that the whole, those issues of how are we doing with progressively upgrading that system so that it's totally serving our constituents with good transmission? Any other departmental ones that, in a broader brush, that have come up?
So is this like the individuals back here, if we had any questions on these?
Absolutely. And if you have those questions, again, as we talked about at the beginning, you could, we've got one minute today, otherwise, bring them with you to the next meeting, or it really helps the staff if you can submit them to them in advance, if you've got time, so that they can be prepared with the answers for everyone. Yes?
Are we going to send all questions to Nikki or Doug, or how does staff want us to handle that? And that way, that would help you, Sandra, if you have a, whoever, they have questions that we can...
I think if you route everything through Nikki, and maybe just send myself and the city manager a copy on that.
Okay.
And then we'll get the answer out to everybody.
Okay, and again, if it's something where you just want to learn a little more and see if you even have a question, just tell them that and they'll answer just your, it's up to you. Councilwoman Schwartz?
I just want to thank the staff for the job they're doing, especially with getting everything online. I found today that I don't even need to bring that big budget book, and, because it's all online. So anytime we have any documents that we're going to be looking at, to post those online, because I think the public can also become more interested in what's going on and how we handle that. So I really appreciate all that effort of getting it online.
Any other wrap-up comments or requests from the council? From staff?
Great discussion today, thank you. We'll follow up with these comments, as Nikki said, as quickly as we can, and we'll see you Tuesday evening.
Sounds good. Thank you. We are adjourned.